Could we please rise for a moment of silence and then, uh, Marvin will, Mr. Thompson will lead us in the plea.
Shall we plead?
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Lesby?
Here.
Mr. McEwen?
Mr. Penn?
Here.
Mrs. Tingle-Sames?
Here.
Mr. Showalter?
Here.
Mr. Singer?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
All right. Thank you very much. We do have a quorum. Next item of business will be approval of the minutes of our twenty-eighth meeting.
Motion, Mayor.
There you second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion on our minutes from May twenty-eighth? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Okay, show of hands, please, that you did receive your check registers. Okay, very good. Okay, next we have public comment. I see we have a good lineup tonight. Remember, you got four minutes to address the council and we, the clock will be running because we have quite a few to speak. First one, Mr. Quick.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and I'm just here this evening for our special events application for the Seventh Annual Taste of Georgetown, which we're holding at Royal Spring Park this year. So, we're only petitioning to have part of Water Street closed off. That'll be to have our wine vendors on the street since they can't be in the park, uh, but also for, uh, for safety issues so we don't have cars trying to drive through an event. Were there any questions from the application? Did everybody receive the application?
No. Yes, you did. It was in your pocket. You did.
Got everything we need? We need an approval.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Tackett, Mr. Singer? Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you, sir. Mr. Bryant? Ron Bryant?
Could be out in the hall.
Probably. Okay. Ms. Combs, Ms. Barbara?
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome.
Madam Clerk, ladies and gentlemen of our council, thank you. Um, my name is Barbara Combs. I have had the privilege of living in Georgetown in Cherry Blossom Village since two thousand and three. In two thousand and seven, I was, um, asked to be on the homeowners board and I remain on that today. Tonight, I am representing the vote of the Cherry Blossom Homeowners Board. Uh, in two thousand and seven, I served on the Project Oversight Committee, which looked into the findings of the Northeast, uh, traffic study paid for by the city of Georgetown. The study told us that seven thousand vehicles every day were on Connector Road, and we believed it because we always were trying to get on Connector Road out of our neighborhood. And, um, and the vehicles were also coming through our neighborhood as a shortcut between Connector Road and Toyota, both coming and going every single workday. Um, we were very concerned about the traffic in our neighborhood because of the children and the, and the pets that we have, uh, there. Um, on December fourth, two thousand and eight, we saw a local, um, zone change proposed by lifestyle communities to, um, to change from business to residential, and it was going to be something called the mill built behind Lowe's. And there were going to be about two hundred or so apartments. Well, getting on and off Connector Road was already impossible for us at times, as was confirmed by the traffic study, but then this was going to complicate it even further. On April seventeenth, two thousand and nine, uh, the homeowners who were going back and forth about the zone change were invited to the Hilton Garden Inn for a meeting by the people who were pushing for the zone change. Those present at that time were CJ May, Attorney Mr. Lear, lobbyist John Cooper, and Councilman David Lesby. There were fourteen homeowners who shared our concerns. We were all witness to three promises which were offered to us by those developers. One was that the approval would be at stale. Two, that the approval of the zoning change would not set a legal precedent. Three, the developers offered one hundred thousand dollars to the city to quell the traffic resulting from lifestyle apartments. On August tenth, two thousand and nine, this came for final approval at the city council meeting, and I again publicly acknowledged and thanked the developers for their promises made, specifically the one hundred thousand dollars for the traffic calming. And I have a copy of the minutes of that meeting, and I believe there's also a videotape that will prove this fact true. The mill was built in two thousand and nine, ten, and eleven, so here we come July seventh, two thousand and eleven. And I have a copy of a letter from CJ May to former city attorney Logan Askew stating that the purpose of the one hundred thousand dollar payment that I delivered to Mayor, quote, "The purpose of the one hundred thousand dollar payment delivered to Mayor Varney a couple of weeks ago was for the specific purpose of extending Ichabana Path," end of quote. Now, I'm confused by this because this is something that I had never heard before. And the developers proceeded to tell our friends who live in the Cherry Blossom townhomes that this was the original attention intent for the one hundred thousand dollars to complete Ichabana Path. And this was news to all of us who were there from the very beginning. On November twelfth, two thousand and twelve, the subject came up again before the city council meeting where I spoke to the city council, and they delayed action on the request to complete the paving of Ichabana Path. Here we are, May two thousand and fourteen. Here we go again. We agree. We agree that Ichabana Path needs to be completed. We absolutely do. It is, it is absolutely necessary. Um, we, what we don't agree with is that the hundred thousand dollars should be used to finish it. The developers indicated to the Cherry Blossom Homeowners Association that the money would be used to ease the increased traffic resulting with traffic from the mill. Now, there are many uses that that study could, um, there are many uses for the funds that would benefit, uh, at the present time, and there were several suggestions made in the Northeast Traffic Study, and I would suggest that the city and the Planning and Zoning Commission go back and look at those proposals because there were several of them. The Cherry Blossom Board has nothing to gain by coming before you tonight except to clear up any confusion that you may have with this one hundred thousand dollars that was originally earmarked for traffic calming.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Polly?
Hi there. I'm Polly Singer-Erdley. Uh, the reason why I'm here tonight is to talk about the bond ordinance for the new police station. Um, last week I did a tour of it, and, uh, it was pretty unbelievable. Um, my husband works in law enforcement. He's the local prosecutor. So, um, you know, I've just heard a lot of stories about the police station, but until I was actually there, I really did see the need for a new one. It's, it's really pretty bad. There's four desks for forty patrol officers. You know, there's one bathroom for thirty-five, forty men. Um, you know, they have to do their own mowing. They have to do their own cleaning. Um, I went with G, using GPS just to see how I would get led there, and it is so hard to find. It is so frustrating. And, um, you know, knowing how, you know, crime victims or, you know, victims of abuse have to deal with this was just really, you know, bad. So, I just, I know they're going to be so appreciative when you all do the, do the right thing on it. And, you know, kind of with a growing community, as we all know Georgetown grows and grows and grows, our crime is going to grow. Our drug traffic is going to grow. You know, that's just a given. We're on a major, between two major interstates. So, um, you know, they really need all the help that they can get. So, thank you so much.
Thank you for jumping on board, Polly. Appreciate you very much. Mr. Alcorn?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Ms. Connie Tackett and Ms. Megan Miller. I'm a first-class scout in Troop Two-O-Nine. I'm working on my citizenship in the community merit badge. One of the requirements is to attend a city council meeting, find an issue that interests me, and interview someone from the council about the issue. I chose the drug-free workplace policy that was discussed at the most recent council meeting and, and to interview to Mrs. Tackett and Mrs. Miller last Thursday here at City Hall. I want to thank them both for their time and the information they provided me. I appreciate their service to our community and to me and my advancement in scouting.
Chris, thank you for being here. I think... From what I gather, after the, the interview, they were more impressed with you, I think, than you were with them. And I, I want to thank you for coming down and sitting down and discussing this because it was very, very helpful. Thank you. Appreciate you being here.
Good job.
Mr. Price?
I'm Stephen Price. I live at one sixty-seven Rucker Avenue. I distributed to each of you a brochure that, uh, they, uh, they, they distribute those at the, um, Chamber of Commerce office. Each of you has one, and each of those brochures indicates to you that somebody considers our existing structures in Georgetown, our existing streetscape, to be, uh, I believe the word they use, um, a beautiful, let's see, um, a beautiful historic attraction. And we, every splitter of every existing building in Georgetown contributes to that beautiful historic attraction that is Georgetown. And I read in the paper that you are going to vote this evening on whether or not to demolish several buildings just north of here. And I'm, I'm going to just read briefly, uh, from a letter which unfortunately I was not able to finish, and so I didn't copy it. But let me start by saying that this council passed in two thousand and three this resolution. "We resolve, the Georgetown City Council, to preserve historic places in our community, to use our historic assets for economic development, to encourage people to experience and appreciate local historic resources, and to the retention and rehabilitation of historic buildings." I read with concern and alarm in the current news graphic of your plan to demolish buildings at the corner of North Broadway and Washington Street in Georgetown. "I like all, uh, like all long-time and/or lifetime residents of Georgetown regard all Georgetown landmarks, including buildings, as important reminders of our town's past and of people and events we like to recall. I am not alone in my fondness for our buildings and streetscape as made obvious by the enclosed copy of the brochure Walk Through Time," which, uh, to which I just referred. Um, "I count myself fortunate to be a Georgetownian and to inhabit a beautiful historic community. That is why I write to you, to ask you to reconsider your plan to demolish the buildings." "I am further joined in my esteem for Georgetown structures and thus in my plea to you for their preservation by the following legislation and statements of public policy, one of which I just cited for you, the Georgetown resident, uh, Resolution of Georgetown Council two thousand and three, its Resolution oh-three dash oh-two-five. The second legislation is the Georgetown-Scott County Zoning Ordinance, four-point-four-three-one, which says, "Enable, it is a purpose of this item of the zoning ordinance to enable the public to participate in commercial activities without depending upon motor transport for mobility. Any activity which would cater primarily to the motoring public should be discouraged." That is law. That is our zoning ordinance. Further in the zoning ordinance, this is item four-point-seven. "The historic district is created to protect the historic character of the area. While the buildings in question are not within the official historic district, their location adjacent to it enable them to contribute to it." I will finish this letter and supply you with it tomorrow. There are, the Kentucky State Driver's Manual says, "Drive less." The Conferencing Plan repeats pedestrianism at least fifteen or twenty times.
Okay, Steve. Ms. Winchell?
Excuse me. Hi, Mayor.
I miss you.
Thank you. I, I think most of you know who I am. I'm Missy Winchell, and I'm a realtor here in Georgetown. And I'm here in support of the extension of Ichabana. I think it was Ms. Combs that quoted a letter stating that the money was donated, or however, whatever the proper term is, for the extension of that road, and I think it's, um, conducive to the traffic through Cherry Blossom to do that. So, I just wanted to state my support for that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Is Mr. Bryant, has he entered the room yet?
Bryant?
Okay, we tried. Okay, next we have first reading of an ordinance annexing the Bevins Motor Property. Uh, sponsor is, is Mrs. Tingle-Sames. And Mr. Thompson, this is the one that they are now occupying, certainly not the one that they're going to be moving into.
Small, that's small street.
An ordinance related to the annexation of certain real property consisting of a total of four-point-zero-zero-nine acres, more or less owned by James B. Bevins, situated on the west side of South Broadway, U.S. Highway North Twenty-Five South, AKA Lexington Road, adjacent to and bounded on the south by the Giles property, adjacent to and bounded on the north by Lesby Path, adjacent to the city limits of Georgetown and Scott County, Kentucky, and known and designated as eleven-seventy-one and eleven-seventy-five Lexington Road. Resident owners have consented to the annexation of certain real property consisting of four-point-zero-zero-nine acres, more or less situated on the west side of and running on the Georgetown Lexington Road, adjacent to and bounded on the south of the Giles property, bounded on the north by Lesby Path, and known and designated as eleven-seventy-one and eleven-seventy-five Lexington Road in Scott County, Kentucky, and whereas all appropriate steps required under Chapter eighty-one A of the Kentucky Revise Statutes have been performed or waived, and whereas a copy of said consent having been made a part of the record in this matter and available for review with the minutes of this meeting, and whereas said property is now embraced within the county of Scott, Kentucky, and is contiguous to the existing city limits and having urban character is appropriate for annexation in its entirety to the city of Georgetown. Now therefore be it ordained by the city of Georgetown. Section one, purpose. The here-and-after described property is urban in character and is contiguous to the existing city limits of the city of Georgetown, and is therefore desirable to annex this property to the city of Georgetown, extending the boundaries of the city to include this property described as follows. See legal description on property annexed, attached here to, incorporated here and, and made a part of hereof by reference as Exhibit A. Section two, annexation. The above described real property is hereby annexed into the city of Georgetown in all technical requirements having been satisfied or waived by consent being filed with the minutes of the Georgetown City Council meeting dated the twenty, the twelfth day of May twenty-fourteen. Section three, zone classification. The annexation of this property shall not affect its zoning classification. Section four, effective date. This ordinance shall become effective upon its publication on the second reading, whereupon the foregoing ordinance was read for the first time on the twelfth day of May twenty-fourteen. Will be read the second time and passed May twenty-eighth.
We have Mr. Langford with us. This is the first reading. Anyone like to question?
I meant the nineteenth.
Nineteenth. Yes. We'll see you then.
No question. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Okay, Ichabana. I would like to say going into this that, yes, I met with Mr. May. Uh, I received a hundred thousand dollar check for him on the state, at the stated time Ms. Combs referred to. I was told that it was to be put to use for Ichabana Trail or Ichabana, whatever it is. Uh, and then we come to council. Other questions were raised, and the hundred thousand dollars is still, still remains with us, and I'd like to get rid of it. Mr. Hoskins is here.
The Mr. Bryant with the fireworks guy from the Public Council, he's going to be quick. He's just asking for money.
Mayor, members of the council. My name is Bill Lear. I was involved in the zone change proceeding, representing the developers. Glenn Hoskins, uh, is, is also a developer out in, in that area. And we were asked to be here tonight to, to explain the background of this, try to keep it pretty brief. Um, I heard, I was outside, but I heard, um, um, a woman that spoke earlier tonight about a neighborhood meeting that, that preceded the zoning actions on this property out there. Uh, Mr. May was, is, is here today. He's the principal and the then-owner. The then-owner was an entity called Oxford Connector Associates. Um, the developer, the developer was Lifestyle Properties. Uh, it was a downzoning from business zones to, to residential for a multifamily development. Uh, there was a lot of conversation preceding the, the zone change application about needs for roads in, in that area. And Mr. May, uh, would say that the, the conversation at that meeting was very much as was related to you a few moments ago. However, uh, what evolved in, in subsequent conversations, um, with Mr. Hoskins and others was that the road improvement that was most in need and most desired out there was the extension of Ichabana Path. Um, the, the willingness of the developer to, to, uh, make a one hundred thousand dollar payment was mentioned in the zone change proceeding. The zone change was not approved conditioned upon that. Uh, but after the zone change was approved, uh, Mr. May did, consistent with our, our, um, discussions and agreement with Mr. Hoskins, um, did designate it specifically for Ichabana. Uh, and that's the way in which the funds found their way into the city coffers. And, and it's our position that, that, uh, A, because the improvement is needed, and B, because that's the, the way in which the developer designated it when he, when he transferred the funds to the city, um, that that's what it should be approved for. This is, it's been five years, believe it or not. Um, when I looked at the, I went back and looked at my file after I was told about this meeting tonight. I couldn't believe it was August of two thousand and nine, but it was. So, uh, that's, that's our position. Glenn can, can, um, show you the map if you need to see where that is, and I can show you where our development was.
I think most of you all are familiar with, uh, the Cherry Blossom development. But in case you don't know exactly where we're talking about this Ichabana Path, uh, this is the overall master plan of Cherry Blossom Village subdivision, which actually has been big about nineteen ninety-eight or nineteen ninety-nine, the zone change. This is the master plan. It has the layout of God Course, the single-family homes, and then over here it has a section called Town Homes of the Villas. Now, up here in this white area, it was a big field, which is still, because of the economy, unfortunately, it's still a big field. Uh, it was purchased by a developer called Akon that intended to build a retail shopping center. They were one of the many victims of the, part of the big real estate recession we just went through. But this, this Ichabana Path, this is what we're talking about right here. It goes in front of the Golden Corral, uh, connects up here the, in front of the Applebee's area, and would, would connect back into the, the town home development. We call it the Yough Town Homes of Cherry Blossom. Uh, their president, their homeowners association, Don Davis, is here. If you can see if I have any questions for him. We also have another, uh, section back there called the Villas of Cherry Blossom, which is a mixture of townhomes and duplexes, and the, the principal and the president of the association of that, and he, Paul Haddix, is also here. But over the five years as this is all developed here, uh, surely we thought by then this Ichabana Strip would have been completed, but it has not. And what that means is all of the traffic, and primarily the construction vehicles, the semi-trucks, lumber trucks, all the subcontractors doing the construction there, have to go all the way back through these single-family neighborhood streets to get out here to the main off, main entrance of Cherry Blossom. And, uh, it's gotten to be just a, just a situation that, that the residents out there can't tolerate. I dare say ninety-nine percent of the people in the audience here tonight... Well, I dare say 99% of the people in the audience here tonight are here in support of the position of using that $100,000 to go ahead and extend Ickebona. Now let me say just a word about what Mr. Lear said. This zone change had a, actually had, had two different stages. It came before the planning commission and the, this council, I think about a year earlier, and got turned down. And then we came back up again, and I represented homeowners association and the developer. And I gotta say, you know, to respect my good friends of the Howards and Mr. Lear and so forth, Mr. May, we didn't, we were against it as well. But the offer was made that if we would drop the opposition, the $100,000 would be specifically earmarked for that Ickebona extension. And again, even, even five years ago, that was deemed to be a very critical extension for the, for the residents in our new town home development. So, we, we, we agreed with that, caught off the dogs. The, the zone change got approved. The $100,000 was delivered by Mr. May to the mayor, and here we are. But I will tell you without any hesitancy, there was no misunderstanding, at least on our side of the table, that $100,000 was to be used for one purpose only, and that was for the extension of Ickebona Path.
But the city, the city itself...
Certainly misunderstanding on Ira. And I mean, this is my sixth calendar year as a council member, so I've been involved in this right from the beginning. I was at the meeting that Ms. Combs talked about. I've talked with Mr. May about it. He stood in here and said that what we understand on our side of the table, I certainly sympathize with the homeowners and understand that this should, it needs to be paid. It's also accessible at this point. I've driven my personal vehicle up Ickebona Path all the way into that. So, it's, it's, it was changed so that it's been accessible by construction traffic, because that was a discussion we had in here previously. But at no time in council or at that homeowners' meeting was $100,000 ever not offered specifically for Ickebona Path, especially because that Northeast Corridor Study was happening, and we were looking for the results from that, how to alleviate problems on Connector Road. I'm sure there are other comments coming off, thinking something else. But this is pretty darn frustrating, again, a fifth year in a row.
We understand your concern, and really appreciate the time you've given us tonight. But I think, I dare say, some of the people thought they were supposed to talk during the public comment section, but most of the people that are here, if, if asked, they would come up and also explain their sense of urgency of extending Ickebona Path. So, with that, I'll, that'll, that'll complete my comments. We'd be available for any questions you might have. As I said, the presidents of the two town home and the villa associations are also here if you, if you'd like to hear from them.
Well, the city is not in the street building business.
Exactly.
We do have the $100,000, and folks, we've burned an awful lot of energy on this issue. I would like for the council...
We have offered to, to be, act as a general contractor to put that street in. We think it would cost less than $100,000. Whatever's left over, we, we'd refund that back to the city. If that would help take the burden off the city.
Why don't you go ahead and put sidewalks in? We don't want it back.
Whatever the city, in your...
Of course, we turn money down, but this one, we want to go ahead and do what we need to do in that neighborhood.
That's, that's my stance on it, too. We, we need to reach a decision on this, David.
Mayor, it, it's been five years.
It has.
You know, the gentleman that graciously donated the money, you know, he, he specified where he'd like to see the money applied towards the benefit of this area. And, and that was, that was the intent. I mean, I was involved with all those meetings, attended each and every one of them. There was, there wasn't anything, as, as Mr. McEwen, I wish you were in the room, there wasn't anything specifically mentioned about an improvement on, on the Connector Road. Nobody ever came up with a specific item that needed to be done. So, and, and he didn't mention one. So, I mean, here we are today, five years later, and the homeowners in this area, a majority of them, a great majority of them, would like to see this completed. And I can't think of anything more appropriate. This is gonna be a moment, Mark.
Oh, no, no.
This is gonna be a moment. I can't think of anything more appropriate than completing this project for the, for the safety, the ingress, the egress to this area. It was several years ago that there was a duplex lot that was under construction, and Mr. Secon bought the property, donated the property to the city, and the city chose to go ahead and put the connection through to Cherry Blossom. And we built that road. We built Sam Pollock Road in the past as well. When the state came in and widened US 25, the businesses, their access was cut off. So, we came in, we built Sam Pollock Road. Wellington Way, back in old Armstrong, that was another example. Louis V. None, there's been plenty of instances where we've actually gone.
Where the city has built?
Absolutely, at our expense.
I'm sorry, I was speaking from my connection with...
I'm just, I'm just letting people know.
And for, you, you mentioned five years. I have not had the check for five years. I haven't been back in office five years.
I understand that. Karen held on to it for a little while.
I received a check, but not five years ago.
All right, all right. Well, Mark, I'm not quite...
Well, I was trying to save you some time.
All right, would you go, go ahead. If you can expedite this, please do so in a positive context.
I'll just save them the time and say, even though this stuff wasn't on the indications that the $100,000 never showed up on the public record, never showed up in the recording of the planning and zoning, or when the council discussed it way back in '09, you know, we haven't come up with a better idea for what to do with $100,000. There's a lot of interest right now in the public in that neighborhood. They think this will alleviate the traffic problem. I'll go and make the motion, we spend the $100,000, with also the provision that David sometimes needs to let me talk, so we can save us that long time.
Well, Mark, I, I appreciate that, and I'll gladly second that. There was a little bit more that I wanted to add to it. But in, in, in the interest and the spirit of cooperation, I won't go into it. There, there've been a, a lot of things that have happened in the area. Kelly, you talked about the, the gravel that's been laid. I mean, we, we really don't allow things like that. I mean, they're, they're tracking mud, they're tracking rock, and it's just, it's not the best situation. But we'll let all that go. I mean, if Mr. Singer's making the motion, I'll second it, and maybe we can move forward in a positive direction.
You know, the $100,000, of course, I don't know how much it will take for you to complete that. And actually, I went over there as well and actually parked in the, at the restaurant, and then walked back through there and then circled around. So, I can see, especially in that back section, why that would be beneficial to that neighborhood, to have that, that egress there. But this, really, the problem with Connector Road doesn't really, it's really, we all feel it, because I live out in that general area, too, so we all feel the problem with Connector Road. But really and truly, $100,000 is not going to go very far to fix any of those problems. And it's really, it's a state road. It's not our road to be able to really do a lot with it. And $100,000 is not going to go far to help that. But I do think it'll help the, the traffic flow through the neighborhood, especially some sections of the neighborhood getting out onto that. And yes, we need to push the state. I mean, Scott County got fortunate with the, with the legislature this time around, but we need to push the state to, to keep Connector Road up on the front and center, because it is a heavily traveled road that's, that's across there. So, I'm actually supporting going ahead and using $100,000 to go ahead and fix, and fix that, and have that done, and then also encourage us to start talking to our state legislators to, to get Connector Road back on the front and center to fix it.
Mark, I would recommend that you amend your motion to include the stipulation that the, and I think it was a part of the original intent, let's just make it clear, that the road gets dedicated to the city prior to the construction.
All right, motion to, motion to use the $100,000 donated by CJ May to construct the rest of the extension of the Ickebona Path with a provision that it would be dedicated to the city's street inventory. And that any leftover dollars are returned to the city after, after the completion of the project. Does that sound good?
That's great.
All right. You like that, Dave?
I do.
The only thing I would add, sorry that, this is a, that I couldn't stay calm during this, but I usually can. Just, I think that historically, or at least we should let the, the history stand, that over the course of this, it was never earmarked by Mr. May. We were also told that Lifestyles in the Mill wouldn't have vinyl siding, which it does in some part. But if the will of the council, the majority of the council is to finish this, that makes sense. I hope that it does alleviate the problems. But on, on the other end, I have, I have not been there during the, during times to see construction traffic through the neighborhood. I have been there recently to see afternoon traffic coming south on Cherry Blossom, coming through the Cherry Blossom neighborhood still, and coming out on Connector Road. Spyglass coming out the back, back end. So, we still have concerns, and we still have issues that we could address in the area, so.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Mayor.
Yes, sir. Were you any more discussion, yes?
Yeah, we, we briefly mentioned the Northeast Traffic Study. And I know, I watched the meeting in August of '09 today. And just for point of reference, we, we talked about, we, we don't know what to do with the money other than go on and pave this. There are about 14 of the short-term goal recommendations that we could eliminate with $100,000 that would have impact on the traffic on a broader scale in that particular area of town than extending Ickebona Path. So, for us to, for us to claim that we don't know what else to do with it, we, we've been given, you know, a, a map, literally a map of things that we can do with that $100,000. Shame on us for not moving on it, to be very honest with you. And like, you know, I, I want to echo what, what Mark said. You know, we know that there was an agreement between the homeowners and the developer for the $100,000, but it's important to know that, that in nowhere in anything that we've ever been able to locate, has the city been a part of any of that agreement. So, when this first came up, you know, I kind of polled the council members who were on the council at that time, only one, maybe two, had ever had specific conversations about Ickebona Path. I'm not saying that it does not need to be extended. I think it most certainly does. But I think for the offer to be made to eliminate the traffic congestion in that part of the, of the, of the, of the town, and then for it to be designated for a specific stretch that really doesn't, you know, and I had a conversation with our, our engineer earlier today, because I wanted to make sure that what I was thinking was correct. What we're doing is not necessarily eliminating any kind of a traffic congestion problem. What we're doing is creating easier access for a specific development. So, I, you know, I'm going to vote against this. I, I think, I think if the city were ever brought to the table from, from an official capacity, if I could find any minutes of notes stating any of that, I would have no problem supporting it at all. But I can't.
Any other comment?
I just would, oh, go ahead, Kelly, I'm sorry.
Question. I didn't, I did not hear Ms. Combs, what the town, not the town, but the Cherry Blossom Homeowners Association's collective, the board...
They, you know, they know all the details, that they're all paid and all the...
Was, was there a decision by the Town Homeowners Association as well?
I would just, Mayor, I'd just point out that on the Northeast Traffic Study, yeah, there are 14 points. I'm not, I can't remember all the various problems that are pointed out. Some are in the twenties, twenty, between 20 and 30 problems in the Northeast Traffic Study. But what we have here is a problem that has been readily identified, not by traffic engineers, but by the people who actually live in the area. And they've said, independent of the developer, independent of any other interest out there, individual homeowners have said, this is a way that you can alleviate a major traffic and safety concern in our neighborhood with money that was given you to alleviate traffic and safety concerns within that neighborhood. To hold it just to the Northeast Traffic Study when we've got this sort of public outcry, we haven't done anything with it for five years. This is what we need to do with it, and let's just get it done and get it behind us.
Mayor Varney, I know you've got a motion on the floor, but it might be helpful for the members of council here from Paul Haddix, who is the president of the Town Home Association. He sees this every day, and is a builder.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
I know you're very active out there, running around Ickebona.
It, it is, and I just, everyone, a part of our association is in full support of that road. It can only help the community with gaining the entrance and exit to their home. And also the construction traffic, you know, the safety, the big concrete trucks, stone trucks, kids playing, spyglass, you know. So, it's really want the support from the council to put the road in.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Any other comments, council, before our call for a vote? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Mr. McEwen?
Yes.
Mr. Penn?
No.
Mrs. Tingleseames?
Yes.
Mr. Showalter?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Motion pass 7-1. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you, residents.
Thanks, guys.
David, how did we build a road?
We offered to enter the road. Are you leaving us now?
What? Okay, that's what he said he was going to do.
Hey, Mayor, that, that probably needs to be something that we discuss. They offered the, the general contracting services on that. I assume that we're going to allow them to do that.
I'm certainly be all for that.
He said he had his own contract. He, they could put it in less than $100,000, so let them have it. And then David, I think David mentioned sidewalks in any day.
I mentioned that, they could donate to that. Okay, let's, let's move on with our agenda. The next item on the agenda, I'd like to introduce our new police chaplain.
Mayor, I just wanted to take a minute to introduce to the council in the city of Georgetown the police, police department's new chaplain. Ben Monroe is a graduate, come on up, Ben. Ben Monroe is a graduate of our Citizens Police Academy, and has for about the last six months been riding with our officers and counseling them, spending time with them, talking about their personal needs, their spiritual needs, and has taken a, garnered quite a bit of trust from the officers. And we would like to present him with his chaplain's badge and become the official chaplain, all volunteer work.
And he's a good graduate of Scott County High School.
Yes, he's, he's a graduate.
Certainly like to welcome him. Thank you. Mr. Bryant? We'll give you an opportunity to speak now.
Thank you very much, Mayor Varney, and ladies and gentlemen of the city council. I, please forgive me for being a little late. I was caught on Nicholasville Road traffic and couldn't get here as quick as I could. But I'm here to, this evening, to ask if the council would consider helping us again, meaning us, the Scott County Council of the Arts, to help us put on the Fourth of July fireworks that we have been doing for so many years. Last year, you all did such a wonderful job and made it possible for us. And I would want to report to you that an estimated 14,000 people saw those fireworks last year. And it has always been a very, very wonderful event, and it showed a great deal of patriotism, and it showed a great deal of community mindfulness from all of you and from the people of Georgetown. And if you could help us again this year, we would be very, very grateful. And I have a sum that I can throw out at you if you wish, and if you...
Throw it.
I will throw it, not hard, but I will throw it. And the sum of perhaps, if you could, $5,000, that would be of great help to us. And we would be most appreciative, and I think the people of Georgetown and surrounding areas would be very pleased also.
I think, I think our treasurer there said she probably could find the money for us, so I'll make a motion if we've got the funds to do that.
Yeah, I'll just make one comment on his behalf, and for your motion, if, since this is less than any amount that require an amendment to the, or a budget amendment about ordinance, if you could just have a motion to add it to the mayor's public relations account, and we can use it from that account.
There you go. Motion to add it to his account.
If you people were increasing my public relations account, I wouldn't have to bring things like this to court.
Did you increase it in your budget this year?
The tightness screws down on me too well.
We sit and take it away.
We have a second, but...
Who was the motion?
I was the motion.
Use the motion, I'm sorry. You the motion, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Marvin, say. Any further?
As long as we get it done, it doesn't matter.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, folks, very much. Thank you very much.
Okay, next item on the agenda, city attorney, city clerk, we will not be addressing... Okay, let me back up here. I had a couple of things I wrote down here other than, than what was on, on my comments other than introducing the new police chaplain. We, we have gotten an awful lot of calls into City Hall, and I'm sure Public Works has gotten calls too concerning our code enforcement situation. And I don't mean that he's not doing his job by any means, I'm, I'm saying he needs help. We have, on a daily basis, of things that need to be done that he just absolutely cannot get to. He's only one person, and we're looking, we're talking about countywide. And we have a part-time situation that is in the police department, I haven't talked to Chief Bossy about that yet, have you, Stacy? That I'd like to talk to you about that. Of course, with all the rain that we've had, it, it's in pretty bad shape. So, we do need to bring something before you so we can get him some help. Also, this coming Saturday is another reminder that we're having our super, super recycling out of Toyota, which we are involved in. And it's nine o'clock until two o'clock, and there'll be signs directing you to where you can take your recyclables. So, that will be this coming Saturday from nine to two. So, those are the two things that I wanted to bring before you.
Do you know if glass is a part of that, Mayor, with Toyota's involvement, or?
Toyota does take glass.
I was going to say, I do not know, we could call and see. All right. The bond ordinance, we are not going to address tonight, taking that off the agenda. Next, we have a resolution approving interlocal agreement for the purchase of properties. You have that?
I do, do they need me to read it, or do they have, do they have a copy?
Yeah, I think they do.
Yeah, we got it.
Let me sort of set it up.
Can I ask why?
Go ahead.
I'm, I'm, I'm lost in our agenda.
We're on nine B.
Nine B, yes.
I think the question was, why are we not listening to the police department bond issue?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Well, first I'll say, we intended to bring the bond ordinance at the same time as the bids, and it was my error on catching it on the agenda, so Tracy had seen it, because we'd originally planned to bring both, and then when we pulled the bids off, that was supposed to come off with it. We wanted to bring them at the same time, so you were getting all of that information at the same time. So, we hope to bring that to you this next Monday on the nineteenth.
The nineteenth, we hope to address that.
Yes.
Okay, now go ahead, councilman?
All right. What you have before you is an agreement, an interlocal agreement, that says, should the city purchase the properties on the corners of Washington and Broadway, that the county would agree to provide half the funding, up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, plus half the funding of redesigning and reconstructing the parking lot, up to one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Part of that agreement would be essentially, since the county would not be owners of that, that property, they would stipulate that it would be used for parking for ten years. And we give ourselves an out by saying, let's say in five years that we decided it needed to be used for another purpose, we'd pay back half of the county's contribution, and the property would be ours to do with what we want. They did make one change to the agreement, which was to simply state that the ten-year period started to run from the time we complete the parking lot rather than the time we purchased the properties, I think that's a pretty easy change. They also wanted to convey, wanted me to convey, while they did not make it a, a condition, they would really like to see that parking lot, assuming that's what happened, be built to the standards that all private developers are held to for parking lots, and that includes proper curbing and trees and drainage and things like that. Now, that, that may increase the price, it's possible, we don't know. We had to, we don't have the advantage of a, a full estimate, but the county seemed to be willing to talk about if that price is higher, putting more in. We needed to put a number in there so they knew what they were agreeing to. But essentially, what you are agreeing to now, you're not agreeing to purchase the properties, you're not agreeing to demolish the properties, you're simply agreeing to the terms and conditions of the county's appropriation of one half of the cost.
This is what you asked us to do in our last meeting, and we did meet with, with the judge, he took it before his court, and this was the outcome, so.
They didn't have any problem with, like, if down the corner or something, that there was some benches, trees put in to make like a little mini park or anything like that, they wouldn't have a problem with that, would they?
No, no, no. I think, I put some language in that said incidental use, and I certainly think you could argue that few seating places would be incidental to parking.
Okay.
And they, along with the sort of beautification idea, I think they would be in full support of it.
I don't make a motion unless you need to read it first. Motion for approval.
Second, Mayor.
Okay, sir.
Just one question on the termination. Says the termination, the city may terminate this agreement upon not less than sixty days' notice to the county, and then it has the provisions about the parking period and paying back. Is there, are there provisions if the county wants to terminate this agreement?
You know, I, I did not put that, I, I don't know that the county would have the ability to terminate.
We're going to be the owners.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, if the...
We would...
They would give the money, but they necessarily wouldn't.
Right.
What about the, what about the ability, and I don't know if you have to make this explicit or not, that we would be held to the parking period and paying back on the parking period if this ended after, if this ended before ten years? If the property wasn't just used for parking for ten years?
Yeah, that's addressed in there.
That's addressed.
It is addressed in there, yes.
I mean, as far as the paying back, but what if, what if, for example, the county decided not to assess us for...
Then I think that we would, we would need to amend the agreement.
Amend the...
Took the reflect there.
But that would still be, okay, but that's still a possibility, okay.
What about the expense of the demolition?
Um, I'm still working on that. He, our, our agreement with the landfill says that they will do four residential structures a year. Or, if they agree to do otherwise, they will do otherwise. So, I'm simply, I'm asking them to assess the conditions of the building and determine whether they're willing to do it, but I'm, I'm optimistic.
But if there's expense involved, should that be written into this agreement?
We did not agree to share the, we said that essentially we would, we would accept that responsibility.
Any other comments?
You want to comment?
No, sir. Yep, we got it.
Motion for a second.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is passed unanimously. Mr. Bob?
Nope, got one more. Apologizing, around six.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I checked off the wrong one. Resolution approving prospective location of our radio tower antenna.
Okay.
Through the police department.
Here's what, here's what we got. The folks in the, the fire department 911 have been discussing the need for increased coverage for our 911 emergency radio communications. Our, our tower coverage is good, but there are some bad spots. There are some spots where coverage just doesn't make it for reasons of either power or lay of the land. Another tower would serve to fill in some of those gaps. And it, and we were approached by a company, QX.net out of Lexington, who says, if you let us build a tower on city property, then we will provide you with lease space, we will provide you with space on that tower, and we would negotiate what the terms of that would be, whether we got it for free or free plus some lease payments. That's not something we've worked out yet. But it's something that, it's a discussion that we would like to have. The, the sticking point is, we inventoried and reviewed all of the city properties to determine where this tower might go. We looked over at the old pool, and it wasn't big enough. We looked at a couple of other locations, there's even a property we didn't even know we owned over by the creek. And it's not, none of those properties will work, they're either in a flood plain, they're too low, they're not big enough. The one property that we have that, that could cite such a thing is Cardone. So, before we even have a conversation, knowing what Cardone is and what it means to the city, we want to get the nod from council to move forward on that discussion. You have a map in front of you that shows the Cardone property and where they would propose to put this tower. You'll see that it's all the way at the back of the property, it's next to the creek, that happens to be a fairly high area. Is the chief here? Is anybody here from the, oh, that's John. John, do you remember how high that tower, they proposed that tower would be?
It'd be probably around one hundred eighty feet or less, it'll be the, right below the requirements as far as what the FFA or FAA requires to be lighted. So, it won't be, I guess, a certain height, they, they're required to light the tower. But it'd be under that height. Andrew, did we look at any other existing towers in terms of working on an arrangement where we could locate on those?
You guys, did you guys look at the other towers? I thought that was a part of our initial conversation.
Yeah, actually, we did have a repeater site at the tower at the college, and we ended up having to take it down because of, there's so much on that tower as far as phone companies, so it was interfering with our traffic. What about the water towers? Did we look at water towers? And other towers? I mean, there, there's several other towers.
Water towers usually aren't, aren't, don't have enough height on them.
Well, actually, I, I think the tower out there right at four sixty, but I don't think the water company's in favor of adding anything else, as far as I understood, because you got... They need their budget approved.
That's why we put that before them.
When you get up there adding to the towers, you know, they're going to have to well, which is going to require them to come back in and paint and...
We get requests quite often to put all kinds of antennas on our tanks. The board has not been disposed to do that in the past because we use the tanks for our own telemetry and skater and controls, and we're concerned about interference. We also have a problem with, when it's time for us to paint the tanks and those antennas are in the way, what do we do with those antennas? We have an issue with that right now, we have, have the issues where on another tank, our telemetry cables have actually been cut by somebody else when they go up to install their work. So, it's just, it's not something we really want to deal with.
Let me also add that, that the, the company that wants to, to build this tower is an internet service provider, QX.net, and they operate primarily by these wireless towers, and they shoot their service quite a distance. I think they, they actually send a lot of internet service north of here, and this would help to increase their service to those areas, but also potentially to residents of Georgetown and Scott County, give them further options for their broadband internet. And it's possible that the city can get some benefit out of it, too, that might be part of the deal, is that the city could get, I don't know, more bandwidth or, or bandwidth in areas where it doesn't currently have. It would be, it would be more than just the city getting this communications equipment. It would be, it's really a, a very advantageous situation for both parties.
Well, it's certainly a, a plus that we could wipe out those dead spots, so we certainly wouldn't want not being able to have communication by radio to cause someone some pain or even death if we don't, we don't want to deal with that.
What's the contract for, I mean, you're giving up a piece of property to them for how long in that time?
Up to negotiation. We could negotiate five years, we could negotiate thirty years. It's flexible. And, and I've talked to Linda Aine, who's sort of the, the cable and franchise guru, and she said, one, it's not a franchise, it's a lease. So, we don't have to worry about the, the competitive purchasing or competitive franchise requirements. And two, she's done this kind of thing a lot in a lot of communities, and I've also talked to some other city attorneys, and it's a very common thing to do. But we had, we sort of have, we're in the driver's seat a little bit on this one, we can shape the terms to whatever we want. Now, if I'm them, I'm wanting, I'm wanting a little more long-term, if I'm going to give up, I'm going to, I'm going to have the cost of constructing it, I'm, I'm going to want a little more assurance that we don't have to take our tower down in four years.
Sure, longer term, you're going to give them, the mortgage is going to probably help as well.
Are they going to do the same thing which you talked about at the college, then if they're there for twenty years, and then put up other antennas that then interfere with what we're trying to accomplish?
I guess it'd be how we negotiate that contract to where, if it's just us and them that can be on it. You know, to where we restrict, you know, because that's, that's exactly the problem we have with that college towers, it just, it just continued to add until it was interfering just way too much, and we had to come off of it. And if I'm not mistaken, they, Andrew, I think they, they are providing some type of service to Toyota right now.
I believe they're providing some internet service to Toyota.
They're shooting it straight from one of the tall buildings, buildings in Lexington. But their, their, their goal and mission is to get, you know, to be, have a tower here to get more businesses within Georgetown, you know, to have that option.
I agree with Andrew, I think we're in a position to really make this contract certainly in our favor.
And it's something, you know, we've, we actually went this prior year with the Homeland Security Grant, we tried to apply for a tower at that, you know, stage, and we were kind of, the communication I had with them is, you know, because that's where we switched to the security access control system, because they were like, there's so much red tape you got to go through with the, the feds, you know, installing the, especially if the feds are the one giving you the money for the tower, all kinds of different site surveys, and, you know, there's too much, and when you get a grant from Homeland Security, it has to be completed within a year, and they said there, you know, there's no way. So, we actually tried to, you know, obtain a tower through them.
And you can see at the location of the site of the tower, this is not going to interfere with any, anything that could be, that will be going on at Cardone.
So, are you...
Right next to the creek.
Are you asking us tonight just to give you permission to start the negotiations with them?
Yeah, here's my, my, my thought was, if the place on Cardone is a non-starter, then there is no, there is no need to keep negotiating because we have no other properties available. So, if that's going to be a major issue, we shouldn't go through all the effort of trying to negotiate a deal. That was kind of the point, I think.
How visible is it going to be from twenty-five?
There is a, there is a thick line, if you look at the map, there's a thick line of trees there. I don't know how tall they are, but it is a tall tower, so I think you'll be able to see it. But, you know, that's a, that's quite a distance there, I don't, I don't have any measurements, but that's...
The slope of that back field goes up, so it's in the highest part. And that's where they do the, used to do the reenactment, right? Right.
It is...
No, and that's, go ahead, I'm sorry.
It's close to the creek, but it's not in a, it's not in a flood plain, it's, it's a higher elevation. That was one of the reasons, we also looked at perhaps the old Bradshaw property, and it, it's essentially all flood plain, so that, that site is out altogether.
What, what's the deal with the written word, I mean, any, any overlap there, any issues with, with that group?
Uh, we wouldn't, we would need to have that discussion with them, and we'd certainly be willing to have it. I don't know, I, I guess I don't know any reason why they would object. Again, I haven't asked, so...
Yeah, we certainly cleared with them.
I don't know, I mean, it's a piece of property we've always, you know, we didn't even know, I don't think we owned it, or, or was, you know, it's not, I mean, I have hard time remembering that Cardone goes back that far. It just seems like an opportunity to use a piece of property we don't use very much for a pretty good purpose, and I can't think of any better use for city property than to go towards, you know, potential... than to go towards, you know, potentially protecting the public and also increasing access. So I don't know. Seems like a pretty good deal.
Of course, if we do our radio, that does, you know, the majority of our radio work. A tower in that area would really take care of our, because a lot of problems we have is in the downtown area as far as the reception.
Yeah.
What, what I would suggest, I mean, at least from my perspective, would be to continue the conversation. But maybe we could share in the revenue that would be generated from other people that were gonna tie into that tower as well. I'd like to see us to be able, not only utilize it, but be able to share in some of the actual revenue.
And I think that's a possibility.
I think the police department did that with the tower that was back here.
Yeah. I think we, like I say, I think we're in the driver's seat on this one. And, I mean, we don't just roll over and, you know, accept that it is what it is. We can, I think we can negotiate a pretty good deal here. Again, I think that if this was anywhere else, I don't really think it would be much of an issue. I think it's a win-win for everybody. It's where we're proposing it, and it's the reason we're bringing it to you all, because, you know, you say the word Cardone, and it has some meaning attached to it. So even though I, I think it is sufficiently far enough on the back of that property where nobody thinks twice about it, there.
Nothing, if we're talking about preservation, nothing preserves property like using it, like putting it to practical use. I mean, that's what preserves farms, that's what preserves house, houses, neighborhoods. It's putting it to practical use. And here's an opportunity to put this to real practical use. Because what that means is, if that radio tower's still there in 50 years, I guarantee it, we'll probably still own the property, and it'll be preserved.
Here's what I would, here's what I would say. We're not, we won't, can't and won't do anything that's binding without bringing it to council. I would have council give a voice vote approving that we could move forward with the negotiation. We'll also meet with the folks at the Living Word and anyone else sort of affected in the area. And I guess the, the folks with the wastewater, I don't know if, I mean, they'd have any issues with it, but we'll meet with everyone who's an interested party and see how they feel about it. Come up with a, an arrangement, bring it back to council for council's approval. And if the terms aren't such that we, we can't make it work, then at that point, we, we move on. But again, I, I, the idea was just to see if I came in here and everybody's was like, "No, we can't do that," then we, we wouldn't even bother. But I would like a sense of whether the council would be in support of that.
I, I would give support to go on and continue the negotiations.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, sounds great.
Got a motion or a second on that?
Motion.
Second, there you go.
All in favor, aye? Poe? I think, I think it's a good thing. I think it is a good thing.
Well, it's gonna take care of a problem we've got, which is what we need to do, so...
Yeah, having those dead areas is a little scary. Now, Mr. Willhite, I think we'll call you up.
Mayor, City Council, behalf of the Georgetown Municipal Water and Sewer Service Board of Commissioners, we're submitting for your review, consideration, and approval of operating in capital budget for fiscal year 2014 and '15. The Board of Commissioners approved this budget on April 15th of this year. Just to hit the highlights, revenues are detailed on page one. We expect our Fund One revenues to be $8,906,079, which is an increase of $27,250 or 0.31% from last year. Fund Two revenues are budgeted to be $1,652,283, an increase of $166,803 or 11.23%. When you put those two together, our total revenues are projected to increase $194,053 or 1.7%. Expenditures begin on page three. For the next coming fiscal year, our proposed expenditure budget is $9,348.85, or $857, an increase of $352,117 or 3.91%. That's for Fund One. Expenditures for Fund Two, the budget for that is $2,153,705, an increase of $172,624 or 8.71% from last year. And Toyota reimburses GMWSS for those expenditures. Our capital projects are outlined on page six. We have departmental requests totaling $1,135,000, and this budget will generate $1,152,000 to fund those projects. We also have a vehicle replacement cost of $70,000, which should be funded from the vehicle savings. We are requesting capital contributions from Toyota in a hundred, in the amount of $100,000 for capital projects to wastewater plant number two. And we also have major capital projects requests totaling $1,399,000, which will be funded from our depreciation account. And then we have an additional capital project for the replacement of a pump station in Mallory Point, which probably be about $300,000. And we've already funded that through the 2013 revenue bonds. That is a real short presentation. If you have any more questions, I will try to answer. Also have Shannon Brown, our finance director, who did all this work. So you can ask questions, too.
Are you going to ask for an increase in water rates this year?
I will, I will tell you, we are, we are developing a new financial forecast model in consultation with our Ray consultant, which will give us a lot more flexibility to input changes year to year, so we can try to stay ahead of the curve on that. So nothing imminent, but it is something we're looking at.
You were able to give employees an increase in salary this year, I'm assuming?
Yes.
And how about your insurance? Did you increase that, like, I think ours was 10%? That we estimated an increased possibility?
We budgeted 25%. The most recent number, we think it's probably gonna be closer to 17. So we'll be, we'll be good on that.
We didn't like hearing that, did we, Mike?
Who's your health insurance provider on the employees?
Any other question?
I'm sorry. Bob, do you intend to fill your vacant bookkeeper in a specific way?
If we can find, if we can get it funded, and we can find the right people for the IT position, we would like to do that. We have one IT guy that runs our whole network for six different locations at all the telemetry and skater, and he's pretty much stretched thin. For the bookkeeper position, we're gonna try to spread that out among existing staff and compensate them for taking on that additional workload. We're gonna try that first.
Where's the line regarding purchases from Frankfurt in Kentucky, Maryland, on wastewater, on Fund One?
That is on page 12. Second, second line from the bottom. You may recall Frankfurt hit us with a 33% rate increase last year, so we've had to budget for that. They didn't inform us they would not be hitting us with a rate increase for this coming year, so that was a little bit of good news.
They increased, didn't they, within the last few years, increase their treatment capacity over there? Was, was that the...
Uh, not to my knowledge. They actually have excess capacity.
Ready for motion?
Is this ready for motion? Not for, well, motion then, that's fine, I thought we were going for...
Second by Kelly. Any further comments, Bob? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Poe? Have a good budget year.
Thank you, thank you all.
Now it's time for our budget. The mayor's proposed budget. It's a pleasure for me to be able to present this budget. I, I think that it contains all the goals that I think that the city needs during this coming fiscal year. It's a balanced budget. We didn't have to go into our reserves, no new taxes, no new fees. This is the first time we've had, been able to have a structurally balanced budget in seven years. It's certainly a good indication that we're climbing out of this downturn that we've had in, in the economy. Reserves all the net profits that we received from our biggest manufacturer, of course, which is, is Toyota. And this goes to offset the incentive that we entered into with, with the coming of, of the Lexus. It provides funding for the capital needs that the city has. And it also provides for a 3% cost of living raise for our employees. Our revenue trends are very, very impressive. Our occupational license fees for payroll taxes are showing a 5% to 6% increase. Our net profits is showing a 50% increase compared to this date last year. And due to the upward trend of these two revenues, we're able to project $625,000 in additional occupational license fees compared to the budget that we adopted in, in July of '13. Insurance premium taxes are up $200,000. Property taxes are up $100,000. Alcohol regulatory fees are up $34,000. And this helps, have also increases for our respective budget increases. Our sanitation fee revenues, due to the rise in our population, new people coming to town, anticipate to have an increase of $95,000 more than the budget that we had in '13, '14. City of Georgetown has strong unrestricted reserves of approximately $8 million. My plan is to continue to maintain this reserve by allowing net profits from our largest manufacturer, again, being Toyota, to add directly to the fund balance. And this will begin with this '14, '15 fiscal year, and continue to, we've made it through the first several years, of course, which is gonna be the heavy portion of our investment with Toyota. The net profit revenue, along with the new revenues that we will receive from other manufacturers who have to increase their output also, and the construction of the interstate, the new interchange on I-75 and the new advanced manufacturing center that's gonna be out on, at Lanes Run. And we'll do this in the first four years of the incentive program, when our budget will be reduced by approximately $2.5 million, which is what we agreed to give Toyota from our occupational license fee. The first few years of the incentive will present a challenge. Of course, the city of Georgetown made an invaluable investment that will greatly benefit the community and our citizens in bringing new jobs and opportunities for growth. As elected officials, we've talked about this in the past, we're certainly responsible for Georgetown now, and we're responsible for providing for the future of Georgetown. And that's what this investment with Toyota has done for us. This budget continues the effort to replace our capital equipment. We are getting six new cruisers, and this will be on a rotating basis yearly so that we can keep our fleet updated. Includes a new one-ton truck with snowplow and salt box for public works. This became visible and a needed item as we went through this past winter. Two new administrative vehicles for the fire department. They asked for three, but we talked them down to two. Funds to replace the roof on fire station number two. A new vehicle for the building inspection. And the one they have now will be transferred over to code enforcement. We're getting a new recorder for dispatch, a new automated truck for sanitation, and a new dunk, dunk truck, mower, and a buggy for the cemetery. This budget also carries forward the payment of the tower truck that was approved in the '13, '14 budget, but will be paid in the '14, '15 budget. Also holds true for our projects that we had in, in stormwater. Those items were approved and funded in the '13, '14 budget, but they weren't completed, so we'll simply carry that amount over to this year's budget. We're also going to add a new wash bay for our vehicles so that we can control any contaminants that might be on the vehicles. We're also going to have a sweeping waste storage. This is an area where we'll be taking the waste that our street sweeper collects, and we can't be making that many trips to the landfill, so we need a storage area. And as it accumulates there, we'll transfer it over into a truck and take it to the landfill. And this, uh, these two items were required by our mock stormwater audit that was completed this past year. Again, the greatest capital need continues to be the construction of our new police department. And this past year, we made great strides in the completion of our construction documents and selection of a new construction, of a construction manager to oversee the project. Based on the bids that we just received last week, I have included $5 million in the '14, '15 budget to fund the construction of the new police station on Bourbon Street, as well as carrying forward the remaining amounts that we still owe on, to the architect and to the construction manager. Debt service of up to $400,000 per year is included in the budget to replay the bond, to replay, to repay the bonds needed to finance the project. This is gonna be a great accomplishment for the city of Georgetown to see this project completed. This provides our police department with a much-needed central facility to serve our community, and it certainly provides our community with a known police department, how to get there when, when they are in need. Our Georgetown employees, as I say every time I get an opportunity, they're the biggest, best asset that this city has. They work hard every single day. They keep our city clean, maintained. They keep our community safe. And they provide assistance in emergencies that could cause harm to life and property. We've been able to, for the past two years, to give a 3% raise to our employees, and we're going to do that in this budget. In doing so, we all need to realize that this may be the last year for a while that we can give this level of increase. But we will always strive to give some kind of increase, if at all possible, because of the obligation or the investment that we have with Toyota. We need to see how that works out. Our insurance package continues to be an outstanding benefit to our employees. We've allowed a potential 10% increase in our medical insurance and a 5% increase in our dental insurance. And these will not be passed on to our employees. The city will take care of those. As you receive and review this budget, I think you will find that my staff and I have succeeded in drafting a budget that funds all the city needs from our projected revenue sources. Very pleased with the outcome of the budget. It addresses our city daily needs. It fairly compensates our employees, and it moves forward with our capital improvements, all while maintaining a balanced budget without dipping into our reserves, no new taxes, no new financing for our smaller capital projects. All of those will be paid for in cash. I hope that you will be pleased as well, and will give strong consideration to the effort from our directors and myself to present you with a budget as you move forward with your task of the adoption of a new budget ordinance for the fiscal year 2014 and '15. I think it's a solid budget, certainly one of the best I've been able to present since I came back into office. And the reason for that is, we, we're having improved economic conditions. And I turn it over to Stacy, and I certainly thank her for the outstanding job that she has done with this budget. She'll hit the highlights. And we don't intend to spend 20 extra hours on this budget either, folks. Give you a heads up now. It's a good one.
Did you put a little of that PR money in there we talked about earlier?
No. Well, just a tad.
Okay, it's slowly coming on, I think. We have page numbers this year. Good thing. Well, good evening, that most wonderful time of year again. Of course, the mayor hit a lot of the high points. It's coming on, yeah, it's just... As he mentioned, happy to say that the general fund, our biggest... As he mentioned, happy to say that the general fund, our biggest fund, is balanced with approximately $21.475 million in revenues and $21.469 million in expenses. And I'm going to go through and hit some of the high points, and at the end, we'll see where we stand. So if we'll go on and Megan to page two, and we'll start looking at some of our biggest revenues and some of these changes. On the first page here, you see property taxes has been increased $100,000 to kind of reflect the average of the last two collections. Obviously, as more properties come in and are built, we do receive an additional property tax, so that is there. The mayor had already discussed and mentioned to you the payroll taxes and the net profits. And our payroll taxes are trending 5% to 6% ahead, so taking that 5% on top of what we collected for fiscal year 2012-13, I was able to increase that budget to $10,825,000 and our net profits to $1,300,000, which may end up being a conservative number considering we are doing so well. We've collected almost a million already through April from all of our other manufacturers, not including Toyota. And again, reiterating that the mayor and I have discussed and planned to try to basically hold on to those Toyota net profits reserves as much as possible to cushion against our investment these next few years that begin in 2015-16 is when our investment begins. And so we did not account for any net profits from Toyota in this budget. They would be above and beyond that budgeted revenue when received. Also, on occupational license fees, penalties, and interest on the withholding taxes and the net profits, those used to be recorded in the same account as the revenue, so we didn't have a good tracking system. We now have two good collection years, so I've added $30,000 to the budget for the penalties and interest on late tax returns. Our building permit revenue, Mr. Burgess in building inspection looked at that and analyzed it, projected $210,000 as opposed to $195,000 in this year's budget, so an increase of $15,000. We've already collected through April 30th, $208,000, so I think that's a very solid projection, probably conservative as well. The insurance premium taxes have been trending ahead. They're probably trending close to $2.4 and $2.5 million, but I have increased them $200,000 compared to this year's budget. The intergovernmentals, of course, as a reminder, those are all straight from either the amounts given to me by the judge for electrical inspection revenue or animal fees, ambulance collections, and they also reflect half of our interlocal department budgets. So those are just the calculations from that. The insurance proceeds, I just wanted to touch on that while I didn't budget for that. After having been here a little over a year, we typically have, we had been budgeting for insurance revenue, insurance proceeds revenue, but we weren't budgeting for the claims and deductibles that go along with insurance claims. So those items are kind of a revenue and expense that happen at the same time, so I'm not budgeting for the revenue because we weren't budgeting for those expenses. So like I said, you get the revenue from the claim in, and then you replace the item. So those are things that happen simultaneously throughout the year, and typically the proceeds cover what you're paying out. Also, just our final payment from sanitation, as you know, there had been a running balance. We took care of a big chunk of that in the 1314 budget, $450,000. That left $56,000, page four, yeah, there. $56,651 remaining in the debt owed from sanitation to the general fund, so I have that accounted for in this budget. Also, we still have some payments to come on our landfill fund, another $600,000 cash payment coming in this December. So I have used $458,000 of that to fund the general fund capital purchases, so those are one-time expenses. And the one thing, the last thing you see there on the prior year revenues, what I want to clarify is we are not dipping into our current reserves. Those are items that were, as he mentioned, were budgeted in the 2013-14 year, and we are just bringing those forward because we didn't make payment for those. So the ladder truck, if you remember, we put it in the budget so that it could be approved and purchased, but it's an 18-month process, which means we'll actually be paying that bill in 1415. And it also carries forward three stormwater projects. The Willow Lane, $12,500, $55,000 for the downtown stormwater project, and $20,000 for the Kentucky Avenue repair. And the Kentucky Avenue repair was added to a storm sewer repair account, but those were all items budgeted this year, not spent, and expected to be carried forward to the next year. Going to look at that. I'm not going to, I'll hit the high points on this. General government, probably the biggest increase there. Let me make some general things first. Obviously, the mayor said 3% raises in all departments. The vacancy rates, I wanted to go ahead and talk about that. I had Linda do an analysis on vacancy rates going month by month, department by department, to try to get a true vacancy rate. Obviously, we have some departments like general government or building inspection that they just don't have a vacancy rate, so it doesn't make sense to apply the 3%. So we came up with vacancy rates to use in police, fire, and dispatch. They have the most turnover in the general fund. For police, we used a 1%. For fire, we used 2%, and for dispatch, we used 3% based on those analyses that Linda did. So those vacancy rates have already been applied to the proposed amounts for those. Our CERS retirement rates are down for 1415. We received those rates from them. Nonhazardous is going to be 17.67 compared to 18.89 in the past year's budget, and 34.31 for hazardous versus 35.7 in the last year's budget, so those are a decrease. And the mayor has already discussed the potential increases in insurance effective January 1st, 2015. That's when our renewal period will begin again. And I also allowed for a 5% in property and liability insurance in all departments. In the general government, the largest increase you see there is in professional services, and that is mostly the increased cost for a full year of sufficiency. Obviously, we had a small contract this year with the full contract not kicking in until April 1st. We only had three months of a full contract, but the city's portion of the sufficiency contract is $83,000. And our building and maintenance, as you see, we've had to transfer some money in there this year to keep up our air conditioner spray. We desperately need some flooring in various parts of the building that are torn up, so that's there. And let's see, most other things are staying about the same, so some small increases there. Obviously, city council budget is strictly your all salaries and benefits, so no changes there other than cost of living increases and those appropriate percentages that apply there. Going on to the city clerk budget. 20% of the clerk's office salaries and benefits are budgeted in the alcohol fund, so 80% in the general fund. Also, I budgeted the new approved salary for half of the year. So as you remember, that's supposed to take effect January 1st, 2015, when the new term begins, so that is budgeted for half of the year. Let's move on to the police department. Again, I mentioned I used a 1% vacancy rate here. They requested two additional officers that are not currently funded in the proposed budget. We increased rent effective July 1st, 2014, so there's an increase in the rent line item, so you can see that. And I realize it looks a little less, but that's partially because we're transferring more to the alcohol fund in the 1415 year than we did. That rent's going up to about $75,000 and change. I think it is about $1,500 a month at the outlet center, so that was accounted for in the agreement that you all approved. And again, mentioning the capital, this includes six police interceptors, the related equipment, the upfitting, the MDTs, the radios that are needed for those items. The one thing we did not fund in the capital request was improvements to the firing range for moving automated targets. We discussed that with Chief Bossy, that if we were looking for balancing the budget, that would be an option of something we could take out, so we did. Moving on to public works. There is a request in public works for a new position for an engineering technician at a maximum salary of $45,000 currently, so obviously that's proved. We'll be bringing forward a job description at everything. Kyle and Megan will be working on that. It includes an expected increase for the winter de-icing salt. As you remember, when we went through the budget last year, that was one of the items that got cut with a comeback later, which we did have to come back later. So we have gone ahead and included that at the full anticipated amount. Due to how last year's winter was, we do expect the per-ton cost to increase on the de-icing salt, so that has been accounted for. For capital equipment, they requested two one-ton trucks, one with a flat bed that was not funded in the proposed budget, another with a snowplow and salt box that was funded. They also requested a snowplow and a salt box to attach to existing unit 339. That was funded. Other items not funded were an air compressor with dryer and an air hydraulic jack. Those two items were not funded in the proposed budget. There were some requested improvements to the salt barn, and then restroom improvements that were requested out at the garage. You'll see that expense come up in sanitation as well. That was something that was requested in last year's budget, didn't make it into the proposed budget last year, so it's made it into the proposed budget this year. It was the second year for the request. Going on to the fire department. Again, this carries forward. I will make one comment about the professional services. They're looking at changing, I think, some who they use for physicals, so there may potentially be an increase there. So we're waiting to see exactly what happens with that change, but that's why there is a significant increase in the professional services due to the cost of changing that. I'm sure Chief Bruin can tell you more about that. Also, it's carrying forward the ladder truck, so that shows up again in the vehicle account on page 28. You see the $1,045,000, so that is the $975,000 ladder truck, two $35,000 admin vehicles. They requested three. We funded two in the proposed budget. Also, Chief has mentioned that the roof at station two is in need of replacement, so he has gotten some quotes and estimates, $40,000 for that work. Onto code enforcement. Not a lot of changes there, other than they did request a vehicle. We did not fund that vehicle because after discussions with building inspection, we feel that their vehicle's new enough. We've discussed that we could potentially transfer that vehicle to code enforcement if the building inspection vehicle approves. Yes.
Well, Mayor mentioned earlier tonight that we were in desperate need of help. We're not looking for a full-time, just a temp service, and is that what you're looking for? Somebody to help you out that way?
Yeah, he's in need.
And as he said, we haven't had a chance to really sit down and discuss with Chief Bossy. There is currently a vacant part-time seasonal safety officer position right now.
It's not in here.
It's not in here right now. It's, well, that position is in the police department, funded in the police department, so it's in the budget, funded, just not in the code enforcement. Obviously, if that position were to be moved to code enforcement, it would be whatever half of that cost is, since that is in interlocal agreement, but we haven't had a chance to really.
Is it the one where, you know, the summer mainly focused, the summer position mainly focused on grass, yards?
It's a potential item. Yes, because right now it's part-time seasonal. That position was always in the warmer months of the year, and that is, I think, when we have the biggest need in code enforcement, so it would be a potential first step with a position that currently is already funded at this time. They have, you know, obviously, I didn't mention, because it is a smaller revenue, our parking fine revenue has gone down due to not having that position there all the time, but I know they've taken some measures to have, I think, some of the crossing guards for the, to use some of their vacancies to cover some extra duty out at doing parking tickets, so trying to get that revenue back up. So they're handling it right now, but it is something to look at as an option. Building inspection does include one vehicle. I think if they made the note that I think if they get this vehicle, they are good for a while, since there are only four of them. And like I said, if this vehicle is continued to be approved in the adopted budget, then we can take their old vehicle and move it over to code enforcement, because code enforcement's currently using a police vehicle. It's probably not sufficient. Dispatch, again, mentioning a 3% vacancy rate was used. Now, they have gone ahead, something we've discussed doing with our new accounting system is trying to merge some of these supply accounts. We have expendable supplies, office supplies, general supplies, expendables, they kind of are all, they're all supplies. We don't need so many that many accounts. They've gone ahead and merged expendables with cleaning supplies, and that's something we'll be working towards in the future with all departments to try to get down to more of just a general supplies account or just using one, but they've gone ahead and done that. It includes $36,000 for the new recorder. That's an important piece of equipment for them and need that in there. Debt service, again, update that just based on our latest and current interest rates. I did run that by our fiscal agent, and they think we're okay doing that for this next year. And does include $400,000. Right now, I've got it all in the principal line item because I don't know which portion is principal and interest each year until we get the final schedule, but currently includes $400,000 to pay the debt on the police department. My latest estimates on a $5 million bond show about $340,000 to $350,000 for a 20-year bond. I think it was just above that $400,000 line, $406,000 to $407,000 for a 15-year bond, if that's how council chose to go. So if we went 15 years, we'd have to fund a few more thousand dollars to put in the budget, but it is in there and it is accounted for, so. Transfers, our typical transfers to cover operating expenses in some of our other funds. Stormwater is 100% funded from tax revenues in the general fund, and that total is $389,985. The majority of that increase, as you'll see when we get to the stormwater fund, is due to the new capital projects that came out as a result of the mock stormwater audit. Transfer to the cemetery is $79,767, and transfer to the business park, $63,624, which is, of course, to pay that debt payment each year. Utilities, we just did an analysis on those. I did even out the streetlight revenue and installation cost. Typically, as we recognize that revenue, that's how streetlights work, is we get deposits from the developers, we hold those in escrow, and then we recognize that revenue when it comes time to pay the expense to install the streetlights. So those should always be equal, and we're going to do a review of that to make sure we've recognized all of our proper revenue over the last few years, but those in theory should be equal. Community services, everything here is entered and received with the following exceptions. We did meet with Jerry, again, the mayor and I. The operating budget for Parks and Recreation has been reduced by a grand total of about $5,551. What this is, is the tech support line in operating, it was originally $35,000. That may have been when they were expecting 20 users on sufficiency, and they were also looking at the computers. You all have already funded the computers in the current year's budget, and their sufficiency annual cost is about $28,000, so half of that reduction for us is $3,500. Also, they have a capital request for a passenger van. We have currently left that capital request in there, and they said the rent to rent a van is usually about $4,000 a summer, so we save about $2,051 for our half of that. So those are the items taken out of the operating budget. For the Parks and Rec capital budget, we have reduced the parking lot improvements. It was a total of $15,500. Our half of that was $7,750, and we also reduced the patio furniture, which was a $5,000 item, so our savings is $2,500 because they plan to purchase that with their capital money before June 30th, so they are going to be able to fit that purchase into this year's budget, and therefore we were able to reduce that. As noted in previous meetings, the ambulance, the county had offered to allow us to pay for that $450,000 in capital improvements over two years, so it's $400,000 for, I think, the defibrillators, $50,000 for the lifts, our half of that is $225,000. So if we pay that over two years, it's $112,500 each year for those capital items. And on the animal shelter, showing the reduction of us now paying for two full-time equivalent employees rather than three, so those are included. As you can see, the other requests are pretty much in as funded, or as requested. There were some additional requests the mayor and I reviewed, and so you can see those in. A couple of those were not funded. They're the last four items on page 46 there. So some of those, I think, we may have funded in the past, domestic violence and the medical mission, so putting funding back in for those. Environmental services, talk about sanitation first. Kind of take a quick glance at the revenues because we'll probably move on to the expenses, but sanitation fees, as the mayor mentioned, we're anticipating to be up $95,000. Our recycling revenue, this is not counting the county's contribution, this is just Our recycling revenue, this is not counting the county's contribution, this is just the recycling revenue and the scrap metal revenue are expected to be down about $12,000 from this current year's budget. So, and as you see, the prior year revenues there are to help support the recycling. We basically split whatever deficit there may be with the county and with the sanitation fund essentially picking up that deficit. In sanitation, just a reminder, we prorate the salary for the director, the administrative assistant, and the supervisor. So the director is split 40% public works, 40% sanitation, 10% cemetery, 10% recycling. The administrative assistant is the same with the supervisor position being split 50% between public works and sanitation. It does include the purchase, again, of an automated truck at $250,000. These are on the capital items on page 53. We'll just go ahead and skip to that, because that's mainly what we're going to talk about. So, and then again, the purchase of dumpsters and truck attachments, which are routine things. They have to purchase every year, again, at $3,612,000. And you don't have to skip to the page, but page 55, we won't flip there yet. Again, the $56,651 transfer to the general fund shown. And here you will see the building expense, the $10,500 would be sanitation's portion of the restroom improvements out at their location. The recycling, there are no capital requests and no major fluctuations there. So staying with, we'll talk about stormwater capital projects now that are, again, on the same page. If you go back one more, maybe I'll talk about that. Yes, thank you. Again, bringing forward those three projects. The Kentucky Avenue repair, as you see, is the first capital item listed. That has been added to account 0224 to 36. That's why that account went from $10,000 to $30,000, because it is a storm steward repair, so rather than having it in its own individual account, it was moved there. And then again, bringing forward Willow Lane Downtown Stormwater Project from the current budget. I had the wash bay at $95,000 and the sweeping waste storage at $10,000. Both were a result of recommendations from our mock stormwater audit, having basically to do with the water runoff from when you're washing garbage trucks and such, not getting into our storm drain system, and also the sweeping waste storage, I think, from the runoff from that. Currently, our sweeping waste storage, under my understanding, is not sufficient, and the runoff is getting into the storm drain system, so that's why that is in there. And again, the total transfer of $389,985 to cover both the capital and operating expenses for stormwater. Move on to landfill fund. The landfill fund is a little bit of an interesting when it comes to budgeting, but typically we get quarterly hosting fees from waste services at the Bluegrass, so those are shown at $136,000. In the end, when it gets down to the audit, basically, we usually, that $136,000 ends up getting contributed to their portion of the note receivable that they owe us for the purchase of the landfill. That's part of the agreement, that their hosting fees would go towards that in addition to the $600,000 lump sum payment they've been making. So we usually end up with interest income at the end of the year that we've earned on that note receivable, but that's always a calculation that comes at the end of the audit, so that's why that looks a little odd of seeing interest income in the hosting fees. That's the difference there. The capital projects for the landfill are brought forward from last year. You see the transfer to general fund, $458,087, again, to cover the one-time capital expenses in the general fund. And to make a note, those are strictly the city's capital expenses. On any interlocal budgets, that only includes our half of that expense. So for example, the building inspection truck was $26,000. I'm not transferring $26,000 from landfill, I'm only transferring $13,000 to cover our half of the expense, so. And also, this does not include the Parks and Rec capital that's funded independently of this. This is strictly our city-run departments. And again, typically, we have all these expenses for landfill. At the end of the year, we end up running those against the liability. I don't know how much you all were talking to me about before that, but we do carry a post-closure care liability on the books currently for both landfills. Once that deed and title is transferred, number one, we will reduce that significantly because double culvert will be off the books, and hopefully, we will speak with the auditors about the requirements and hope to take that liability completely off the books. Yes?
Does the landfill still owe to the city?
It's around $2 million, I think. I'd have to look exactly. I don't know the number off the top of my head, but I will get that and email it to you.
Okay.
I will get that. So that's why sometimes the budgeting for the landfill department is just a little bit of odd, because we do net these expenses against that liability at the end of the year. Our MAP fund, currently, we don't have a public hearing scheduled or the list. Kyle will be getting that, so currently, the revenues and expenses for the MAP fund are budgeted at exactly what the Department of Transportation emailed me back and said our projected revenues are, which is $666,082 for 1415 revenue. What we'll do is, once we have that public hearing and the list of streets we're going to pave next spring together, we will probably have to come back and do a budget amendment to possibly bring in prior year revenue, because we do have a balance in the MAP fund currently, although he's getting ready to do some paving, so the balance will go down after a bit. LGEAF, again, this is our coal and mineral revenue from the state. It's budgeted right now, expenses and revenues on what we've been receiving, so about $10,000 in that revenue, $200 in interest. The drug fund, very similar budget to next year. We don't really know from year to year, obviously, what we're going to get until it happens, so Chief has projected, same as last year, and obviously, that will change as busts happen and we get money from the state and federal level, and we do have, expect to carry forward a balance from this year. The alcohol fund, based on the first three quarters collected, we were averaging right around $726 for the year. That's without fourth quarter collections. Of course, things usually pick up in the summer, but $729,000 is what I'm projecting. Again, 13 and 1/2% of the police operating expenses, that's salaries and all of the operating items, so everything except capital is in here. There is also about $11,000 in overtime, and as you see, alcohol program expenditures, $5,500. Those are alcohol program-specific items for education, overtime for roadblocks, et cetera. Obviously, they made a lot of their big capital purchases in this year's budget, so just continuing some items for that education. And a small amount for, at the end of the year, I will get a log from fire and building inspection on about how many inspections they've done this year and move a portion of their hourly rates over to this to account for that. And again, 20% of the city clerk offices' salaries and benefits are in here. Cemetery fund revenues continue to be trending down. I think last year at this time, we collected about $88,000. This year, at this time, we've collected 71, so they're down compared to last year. This actually goes through April, and last year's only went through March, so we are down. So I've lowered that projection by about $15,000, kept the services about the same. Again, this is an interlocal agreement, so the city and county split the deficit on any operating expenses. And over on page 74, you will see the capital items that we've mentioned, the buggy and dump trucks, and also the, I think was discussed a little bit during the interlocal budget agreement, the dump truck and everything, and then a mower and the equipment for $9,500. And the transfer to trust is whatever we budget for lot sales, we transfer 20% of that to the trust account, and that trust account is just, it's held cash to maintain. We basically just transfer the interest earned on the trust to the cemetery operating fund, and that's it. It's not a budgetary fund. The federal and state grant revenues, or federal and state grant fund, I've carried forward a few of the grants that have not been completed. The grant from the transportation cabinet, that was the $100,000 to Cardom, $100,000 to Ward Hall. We're in progress on Cardom, and we'll be bringing something to that for you to approve on that soon. And then the home lead security grant for the fire department for the security access controls on Stations 2 and 3, we just bid that out, but we expect the payment and all of that to be finished up in the next fiscal year, the installation of all of that, so I've carried that grant forward. And we went ahead and brought into the budget the KIA infrastructure loan that we received for the South sewer extension. We're just carrying it forward until we make some progress on that project, so it will at least be in the budget and we don't have to put it back in there again. So again, those items are brought forward from this year. The business park fund, simple revenue is transferred from the general fund. As you can see, on the fiscal year 2013 actual and the current year through April 30th, we have had land sales. In years we don't have land sales, then the general fund does not have to transfer money to pay for those. Hopeful that that will happen again this year, but until it does, we do budget the money to transfer to cover the debt. And the capital projects fund, very exciting that the Yukon Pavilion is almost complete. We've made most of our payments on it, and it will be done before the end of this budget year, so we're very excited about that. So this does include bond proceeds of $5 million, and that would cover construction cost and the financing cost for issuing bonds. And bringing forward, as of right now, $427,425, which is what's, we budgeted this year, the full amount of the contract for the architect and the construction manager, so this carries forward the unpaid portion, so we will continue to pay for those with cash. And so you'll see the total for that building right now at $5.4 million. And then the only thing this doesn't account for right now is any furniture we might have to buy. We haven't gotten quotes on that yet, so when it comes time for that and we have quotes, we'll get discussion, have discussion on that and make efforts to pay for that with cash and not finance any furniture. The last two or three pages I won't go through, it's just a detail, a little more detail where you can see the capital items in a snapshot what was requested and what actually ended up in the proposed budget. So we're happy with this budget. We hope you will be as well. If you have any questions, I'll take them right now. Otherwise, we will put this on next Monday's agenda for discussion. I'll probably ask Tracy to put it on last, and then, you know, we can go from there. Please feel free to send me questions. Any information gathering that I can do prior to the meeting will be helpful to all of us, and like I said, we hope to have the bids and ordinance for the police department on. The bids came in well, and we're just waiting for the final review so that we can give you the final number and make sure everything's included, but I think you'll be happy with where they came in. And we should be able to do the $5 million bond ordinance without, we will not need to do the $5.5 million bond ordinance that we had the "just in case" reading on. We won't have to do that, so. Any questions at this time?
Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, planning zoning, second reading of the ordinance, amending subdivision regulations for preliminary plaits and plans, sponsored by Ms. Tackett.
An ordinance amending the Georgetown-Scott County subdivision and development regulations. Summary, section one, amends Article 3 of the Georgetown-Scott County subdivision and development regulations to provide that preliminary plat approvals are valid for a period of two years. Provides that where street or utility improvements are involved, approval of construction plans for proposed subdivision or phase of a subdivision shall extend the preliminary plat approval an additional two years from the date of the construction plan approval. Provides that where street or utility improvements are not involved, approval of final plat for proposed subdivision or phase of a subdivision shall extend the preliminary plat approval an additional two years from the date of the final plat approval. Provides for an additional one-year extension of preliminary subdivision plat approvals. Provides that appreciable changes in the vicinity of the approved preliminary plat have not occurred upon application to the Director of Planning Commission and subject to the commission's review. Section two, amends Article 4 of Georgetown-Scott County subdivision and development regulations to provide that preliminary development plan approvals are valid for a period of two years. Provides for an additional one-year extension of preliminary development plan approvals. Provides that appreciable changes in the vicinity of the approved preliminary development plan have not occurred upon application to the Director of the Planning Commission and subject to the commission's review. Section three, provides that all prior ordinances and parts of ordinance in conflict with this ordinance are repealed. Section four, provides this ordinance shall become effective on passage and publication.
Questions? Well, first of all, motion for approval.
Motion, Mayor.
Second. Second by Mr. Penn. Now discussion. Got Joe here with us to answer any and all questions. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Mr. McEwen?
Yes.
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mrs. Tingle-Sames?
Yes.
Mr. Joe Walter?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Good job, Joe.
Oh, that was a good job, yeah. Fantastic.
Okay, police?
He had to run.
He's on call, I guess. Council comments. What have you been hearing?
Potholes.
Potholes. We are, every day, that hot box is out there working, believe me, and we get them here at that city hall, too.
I was wondering, exactly, is there, what's the process for determining which roads need to be paved or what roads need the patching and the like?
Well, hopefully, we want public works when they're out running the streets, if they go, come across something, potholes otherwise, that they report to us so that we can get potholes patched up, but they are going at it daily.
I need to look at every single street, come up with an evaluation, pretty much.
As far as repaving?
As far as repaving.
What about potholes? Is it just on a?
Call Public Works.
Call Public Works?
Don't send them to me, because I just ford them on the Public Works.
They got the hot box, right?
They do. I got a mouse and a computer, so.
And that number is 863-9855 for the folks at home.
Very good, Mark.
Is it not?
Yes, it is.
Very good, very good.
Mayor? Yes, Mark.
Kyle, were you still up there? A year or two ago, I brought up the, I guess it was concrete cupboards like on Pocahontas, Pocahontas Water Runs Third. I was up there and I got corralled by a couple ladies.
I got a call, too.
Okay, well, I told them to call you.
He wants to thank you for that.
But no, I don't know whether we have money to do anything like, but they are, they are just deteriorating. They're falling over, and sooner or later, they're going to have to be.
Unfortunately, there's a lot of places like that around town, and there's only so many capital projects I can undertake at times.
I was asked to bring it, and I brought it.
Thank you.
It's on your shoulders now.
Appreciate it. Anything else?
Not for Kyle, but.
Oh, come on, David, give him something.
Along the way, so we're talking about on Cherry Blossom, about where Walmart starts going towards Toyota, the center train lane is full of gravel, and it's just where the roads deteriorated, and the problem is, it's created a very, very dangerous situation because cars get on it and they slide. And I know that's the state road, obviously, but in the past, I know we've been able to make calls to whomever at the state, your good friend R.C. Littler was very good at that, and I'm sure Terry could probably maybe do the same, or your office directly, but it is a bad situation, a very bad situation.
Is it just gravel that spilled out into the road? Could it be just swept back in?
It's deteriorated asphalt from the road from this one.
And this is in front of?
Starting essentially at Walmart, heading towards Toyota.
Yeah. Okay.
It's kind of in the middle, middle turning lane.
Turning left, huh?
Well, kind of the suicide line, I guess, as they call it. Is that right?
Yes. Anything else?
Yes, Mayor. What's our process for, we've got more than one vacant burned dwelling that might fit into our opportunity to take the landfill up on clearing that out and putting it in? What's the process for helping?
Well, I wish there was a more formal process. The process is, I call Greg, and I say, "Greg, this needs to be done," and he says, "I'll get back to you with a quote." And usually, I have to follow up a few times, but that's how it works.
The fire department?
He is trying to get a quote right now on Hamilton 214, Hamilton.
The house that burned, yeah.
Yeah, I think we have one on Bourbon Street, too.
We have one on Main Avenue.
The process is, he has to get a quote. Yeah, the process is, he has to get a quote from folks to, on, to getting that done. They don't use their own equipment and people. They have to essentially bid it out themselves.
But that's part of our... Is that something the city pays for? Or that's part of our deal with them to do before those...
Yes.
Okay. What about with the homeowners or with the landowners?
Well, there is also that. If a house burns down, they are first, and I think it's either fire or code enforcement or both, they get a, they get a notice that their property is, you know, condemned. It doesn't meet the codes, dangerous structure. And they are technically responsible for demolishing. But, you know, 99 times out of 100, they're not demolishing. So then you proceed to the, the city would technically be in abatement.
Isn't there a certain number of buildings that we can burn?
Yes.
For training or...
Yes. But what we find out a lot anymore is there's so many requirements through state and through the EPA. All the paperwork we have to go through is really difficult for us to, you know, we call them acquired structures, to burn. But like houses that, you know, have already been caught on fire, the stability as far as, you know, going inside and training on them is kind of, you know, it's gone.
Right. Okay, we got a couple that's almost burned all the way and aren't, that we need to take them down. I'll give them to Public Works. We'll take the big, big equipment in there. We've got to do something with them.
You know, with the regulations EPA's got now, you know, you, before you ever burn that property, you got to prove that it's had asbestos abatement done on it. Any like stuff that, you know, shingles had to be removed. So that's what you're looking at as far as that goes.
Okay, I knew we once were able to do that.
Yes, and we still do have that option. It's just a lot of, you know...
They've made it a lot tougher to do. That's what you're saying, okay.
And all three of those, the third one is, I don't know the exact location. I mean, I know the location, I don't know the exact house number. But it's like 500 Main Avenue.
On Main?
Main Avenue.
Main Avenue.
At the corner of Main and Chambers. But all three of those are in my neighborhood, so that's why I'm asking for that to be addressed. The other thing that I wanted to mention, and as we talk about figures of certain things, 5,000 for fireworks versus 5,000 for the architect that gave us a report on the center of town, or 100,000 for a road, or 100,000 to fix the center of town. I'm not saying those are the same things that can be compared, but those are some topics and figures that we've discussed tonight and over the past couple of meetings. But in doing a little more research on the center of town, I don't have complete information, but in talking with Don Hawkins and Jim Burgess, our building inspector, it may be possible for us... We still have 20,000, a little over 20,000 left on the White Oak contract to use that and with the possibility of another 70,000 to 80,000 that we could get everything back to meet codes to entertain the possibility of some of the entities that have expressed interest in it. And we've got a nonprofit or two.
The organization that you talked to.
They're still interested. But my concern in looking into, really, what could we do to get it to code that would take the liability off the city so that a potential leaser could... Lisi could take, could take control of that without, I guess, undo some financial stress and take away the city liability. So I just wanted to give that out. I hope to have more information maybe at the 19th.
Andrew, could we lease it to them as is, you know, and get them to sign some acknowledgement of responsibility? Any issues need to be brought up to code or environmental issues were the case? Maybe it would be totally on them.
You can, you can contract your way into whatever agreement you want, waivers of liability or whatever. Now, it's no guarantee, but you can try your best. Never can stop a citizen from coming after the city. If it's a city-owned facility, they would argue that the city had the responsibility to do something about it. That doesn't mean they, they win, but...
Right, right. But I think, and at least from my perspective, I'm not speaking on anyone else's behalf, if we were going to do something with somebody, I'd like to let them try to be responsible for it. I mean, I guess I have concerns with us going there. I mean, I don't mind putting some money into it, trying to fix it up, letting some entity utilize it. But as it related to the center of town, it was where we owned it. We were letting them in there, and I don't know who, I mean, inevitably, we were responsible. And that's where I guess I have a little bit of a, more of a concern than I do letting some other entity come in and take responsibility. Does that make sense?
Transfer the responsibility.
I'd like to transfer the responsibility.
Absolutely.
You know, I don't mind doing, personally, I don't mind doing some things to it, but letting them be responsible for it. And when it was specifically the center of town, I felt like that, I didn't think we could shed that responsibility to anybody else but ourselves.
Well...
And that's, and my concern has not been that. But I also wanted to find out why, not why, how much it really would cost us to fix it. Because the architect's presentation just blew all of us away, but it was a waste of five grand. I mean, I could have told you, I have no background in this, but I could have said we could put a million dollars in the building. We could put a million dollars in any building. So I'm really trying to get down to what's the reality of it and we can do that before something else goes wrong.
Mayor, I mean, you know, when we leased, when we leased Cardom to the Museum of the Written Word, I mean, there's finished parts, but then you go into the, what do they call it? The cloisters on the third floor where the nuns actually stayed. That's completely unfinished, but they have access to it, the basement. There was building two that was not really up to any sort of code or was used by the city at the time much. And then the old gymnasium they put in during the Kennedy administration. That thing really hasn't been used much over Cardom, and it probably is not up to code. And yet, we went ahead and leased it to the Museum of the Written Word, and they've been getting the full use, you know, the use of the property and also accepting the liability. I mean, I think the model and the precedent's there as far as if we can find a nonprofit like the Sea Cadets or some other local nonprofit to make use of the center of town and accept the responsibility as is. I mean, I think that's very much a possibility. I mean, I think, I think we've had, you know, entities out there approach various council members, approach the mayor's office about potentially putting the center of town to some sort of use, and they're not really too hung up on the condition of the building. So it's a possibility, at least.
As it relates to the Sea Cadets, Kelly, were they, were they willing to pay something on a monthly basis, on an annual basis?
It's negotiable.
Can we get someone in to talk to us?
In the shape it's in, I would think. I'm just, that's my opinion. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to present it to them like that.
Get someone in to talk to Andrew and myself? See what might be feasible? It'd be a good starting point, see?
Maybe, I don't, I don't know. I don't feel comfortable with that, but sure.
Okay.
For whatever reason.
All right. Anything else, Council? Motion for adjournment? Motion? Second by Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
All in favor, aye? Okay, remember, next week's meeting is a special meeting. We can only talk about that which is on the agenda. So get your stuff in if you want something put on there. Next Monday. Have a good night.